As we begin all of our meetings, we will begin with a moment of silence and I ask you to join in that with us if you would like to. Again. All right, if you'll stand with me, I will have the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Tonight's meeting is a work session and the Board received an agenda last week for this September 13th, 2021 work session. Were there any changes, additions, or additions to this? All right, if not, then if there are objections, it will stand approved as presented. At this time, it is time for public comment. We have 30 minutes for public comment. We have 12 people signed up that would like to speak tonight. And I know a lot of them are on duplicate topics. So, policy B E D H gives me the ability to change the amount of time that a person can speak. Normally, it's five minutes, but since, and it states specifically on duplicate topics, but since so many of these speakers have indicated that they're speaking about the same thing, we would like to limit tonight's discussion for each person to two and a half minutes. That way, we can hear from all 12 people who have called in and asked to speak tonight. When you have one minute left, Mr. Handy will hold up a yellow card to indicate that there's one minute left. And then, when he holds up the red card, you will be asked to stop speaking. You know, and I encourage you, if it's already things that have been discussed, please do limit your time so that we can get all 12 of these in in 30 minutes. And finally, I just ask you to be respectful of each other, respectful of the speaker who is presenting tonight. Mrs. Bay will call out the people as they called in, as the order that they signed up. So, with that, we'll start our 30 minutes and we'll have our first speaker.
Josh Hury.
Hi, Josh Hury. I did have this timed for five minutes, so I'm gonna try to touch on the, okay, I'll just go fast. So, I'm here to cover two main points. One is why I'm even here, and two, just some general thoughts. Number one, I'm here because I've realized that a good starting point for me to be held accountable as a parent and resident of O'Conne County is to publicly state what I believe and where we, my family, stand. So, referring back to masking a couple of weeks ago, because I don't think for a second that the Board deciding to not decide anything in the previous meeting is something I could hang my hat on. If that is re-implemented, my kids will leave the public school system and will figure it out after that. It's the least I can do for them. I know there are multiple others that think similarly, simply from attending the last two Board meetings. I have two kids, one in third and one in first. We've determined our options outside of public school are private school and homeschooling. In truth, it would be impossible for my wife or me to homeschool unless one of us commits to full-time virtual schooling at their ages and younger is homeschooling. That was never an answer. It was simply time off for them, and it meant leading to us taking time off or greatly reduce work productivity. And that has been stated. The goal of SDSC is to remain with in-person instruction, but this goal will not be achieved through the continued asymptomatic testing, contact tracing, quarantining, isolation, nor through masking. It drives me up the wall with the continued facade that we can stop the spread of this virus by doing such, as well as the facade that this is a dangerous virus for children in general. Every day, we take a risk by going outside our home, driving anywhere, doing anything. Everything we do is risk versus reward, and the risk is so small here, I can't believe we're still talking about this today. And I wanted to put in a quote here that I think relates to this and other things that have gone on the past year and a half, which is a quote by Elena Gorkova about the Soviet Union. "They lie to us, we know they're lying. They know we know they're lying, but they keep lying to us, and we keep pretending to believe them." Some general points. Does anyone know the difference between six feet and three feet of space for social distancing to help prevent the spread of SARS-CoV-2? The answer is three feet is six feet divided by two. If you have zero symptoms of COVID but get a PCR test anyway, and it comes back positive, do you have COVID? Does anyone know what primary complex motor stereotypes are? It's a movement disorder that is not caused by, that is not caused by something like autism, seizures, et cetera. If you didn't know this, you'd be in good company with a pediatric neurologist in Greenville that we spent over two years going to try to find out what was causing this for one of our daughters and ruling out other causes. And I'm not knocking this doctor because she was awesome, very knowledgeable, very open-minded. She took a study that I brought to her from Johns Hopkins, which turned out to be the only organization in the world to be actively researching this. And the point here is that I figured out what was going on by simply searching and reading on my own whatever I could get my hands on.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jamie Dolling. Sharon Williams.
I'm gonna try this. I've got like too much time outside. My name's Sharon Williams. First thing I will tell you is that you totally destroyed the 2020 senior year of my grandson. You destroyed what was supposed to be the best school year and the beginning of the education of my great-grandson. I will, y'all, all personally responsible. Y'all are a lot more educated than I am. Y'all know what's going on in this world a lot more than I do. I'm just a great-grandson, it's just a home. But I've educated myself a lot this year. You've shown no regard whatsoever for the mental, emotional, and social impact that your decisions have made on these kids, none of them. I think you all should be held personally responsible. You took personal freedoms and liberties from them that wasn't yours to take. That was when you should have stood up to Governor McMaster and State District Lieutenant Molly Spearman. But you didn't then. But now, you want to go against what they're saying with the mask. So, you're the ones that's causing the conflict. Y'all know Pro Physio 1.108. Y'all know all about that, I'm sure. I'll just skip over that. But the disciplinary action and segregation of these kids is out of control with these school bus drivers and these teachers. I suggest you get a handle on it, decide which horse you're gonna ride, and stick with it. So, then we'll know which horse we're gonna feed and which one we're gonna put out to pasture. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, I know we got four and a half minutes, so we'll look at it and bring back up some things that we've been dealing with before in the past that we're still gonna deal with. But everything kind of got derailed by the mask thing. CRP in schools, I say it's not being pushed, but at the same time, Dirty Dolls here with a few other ladies, and they're happy to push it. So, we're still gonna let the teachers know that we're here standing with them. You said that if we brought some stuff, that you would investigate it. And we brought some stuff to you in the meeting, and within 48 hours, it's in the paper that there was no proof of the food. The teachers reached out to me and let me know that you didn't ask a single one of them about what we brought to you that was their concerns. How do you do an investigation without asking the people that it was effective and what happened? It sounds to me like a cover-up for your friends. So, I want to reach out and ask for a third-party investigation into this, into these allegations with a little bit of proof that I brought. I'd like for a third-party investigation into that. So, I let the teachers know we're still standing with them. And basically, you know, if that's exactly the way it happened, which is what all the teachers told me, you didn't ask none of them. And you said you would, and you said there was no proof to it, but you didn't ask none of them. If we're gonna look into exactly how in the world that's an investigation, it sounds to me like a bunch of crap. As far as the mask thing, yeah, anybody, I said last time, anybody that'll vote for a mask mandate, we'll vote for a vaccine mandate. And I feel confident y'all was planning to do that, or you wouldn't have had an emergency meeting. It just happened to be that there was a court ruling we were waiting on. So, Joe Biden speaks the other day, he said vaccine mandates are common in schools already. So, that lets me know that he is gonna definitely go for it. I mean, with all the stuff he's done, it's definitely that direction. So, just like you said, which horses you gonna feed and which ones you gonna put out to pasture. Now's the time, we're gonna draw the line in the sand. We're gonna let, you need to let us know where you stand on this thing, because we need to know which ones are you. I mean, it's not threatening anything, it's just, it's the way things work. If you don't like how somebody votes, then you try to vote them out when it's time. We're not gonna do anything outside of that, but we do need to know who to, just play it on video for the whole county to see, for all the parents to see, these people stood in this direction, and these are the ones you need to get rid of so we have common sense back in here. Thank you.
Jennifer Bell. Jennifer Bell?
Not here.
Chad Oberholt?
Good afternoon, guys. I want to say that, just before we start, I do want to let you guys know that me and my family did pray for each one of you guys. We understand that the situation that y'all guys are in is not easy, and we think that we spoke very loudly and clearly at the last meeting of what O'Conne County feels like. Y'all guys are not alone. We are praying for you guys, and we know these decisions are hard. But we also know that the path to freedom starts locally, and we are not going to stand by and let these mandates and these vaccines control our lives and control our kids without there being a fight. We're not against you guys, and I hope y'all guys know that. We're not trying to, I know me and you had some discussions last time, and I'm not trying to be that guy. But we want y'all guys to know very loudly, very clearly, it was very obvious where O'Conne County is on this and where the parents are. And there is a few who are trying to speak really loudly, but the voice of O'Conne County when it comes to mandates is very clear. And we're asking you guys to hear that. Mask mandates are not the right way to go. Vaccine mandates are not the right way to go for our kids. It is not y'all's right to mandate that to our children. It is a parent's right in this county, and it should always be. So, we are not okay with that, and O'Conne County is not okay with that. And I think y'all guys heard us, if y'all guys wronged us with yourselves. And I would like to know a couple of things, too. I would like to know, along with Luke, where you guys stand. Like, I think it was pretty clear where Mr. Thor's gonna stood on it. But I think it would be, I don't know if y'all are allowed to speak to that later. I don't know how this works, I'm new at this. But I would be curious if you guys would be willing, if y'all guys are willing to put it on video, who y'all stand with. And I don't know if that's an option or not. Am I done?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Justin Kelly. Linda Holt. Patricia Carvallis Dale. Marlo Raymark.
Good evening. My name is Marlo Raymark. My family's lived in this community for 25 years now. I have a son that graduated from Seneca High School last year, and I have a son currently that's a freshman at Seneca High School. First of all, I want to thank the Board for the difficult and important role that you fulfill in our community. I know that the decisions that you make are not easy, particularly in today's climate. As a society and a community, we are bombarded with all kinds of noise, some of it good information, but unfortunately, a great deal of it is noise meant to inflame and divide. I do urge everyone in our community to be careful with deciding what to believe in all of that noise. Don't rely on a mere meme to convey the truth. When you see an article, look at the source. There are sources that are more reliable than others. If the article is from a good source, don't just stop at the headline. Read the entire article for content and context. That matters. The main issue I'm here to talk about today is my support for mask mandates in our public schools. This morning, as we were getting ready for school, my son said, "Mom, can I get a COVID test?" I was actually kind of surprised at that, because as a family, we are vaccinated, and he wears a mask to school. But he is concerned. Recently, I've seen, we've had personal experiences with people that are in the ICU, on ventilators. We know of people that have died. I mean, it is more so today than it was a year ago. And if my freshman son is asking me whether or not he should get a COVID test, even though he's taking all the precautions, it's because those around him are not masked. We're not taking the right precautions to keep our children safe and our teachers safe and our community safe and our families safe. Again, I want to thank you for all that you do, but I do urge you to make sure that you are relying on reliable information from credible sources, not just information that is gleaned from Facebook or the Internet without having properly looked at the sources. Thank you.
Claudia Gayle Johnson.
Good afternoon. First of all, I'd like to thank the school board for allowing us to come together and discuss this very important issue that affects our children's lives. My name is Claudia Johnson, as you heard. I have been vaccinated. I have two kids that attend the O'Conne County School District. But guess what? It's not about me. It's about our children. This is not about political parties. This is not about the color of our skin. It's not about the society that we run around with, what group we belong to. It's about the health of our babies. This virus does not have any names on it that will not attack, attack us and will attack us whether we have rank, religion, or the street we live on, or on who we voted for. This is about our children's lives, their friends, their family, their neighbors, their grandparents, their baby sisters and baby brothers' lives, so they can live and have a healthy future. Please let us look out for our children, because it's not about us. It's not about who we are and how important we feel we are. It's about these babies that's in school. I had, my little 12-year-old got vaccinated, thank God. She's been, she goes to Seneca High School. There's been cases there. My little son is fifth grade, 10 years old. He wasn't able to get vaccinated, but guess what? He got COVID. He's better now, thank you, God. But we gotta stop thinking about our feelings and look out for our children. Let's live and show our children how we can care about one another and fight together against this awful virus. This means we have to be a part of one another. It ain't about anything but our children. And I ask you all to open your hearts and think about mask protection is what's needed here.
Good evening. My name's Carol Up. I've been in O'Conne County for, I'm sorry. I've been retired educator. I think most people can hear me anyway. My name's Carol Up. I've been here about two years. I'm sitting back here with two of my friends. All three of us were educators, are retired educators. We've dealt with schools and school issues for a combined total of 107 years. We've seen a few problems in education, and this is another one, a mighty big one. And I'm here tonight because we are still passionate about what's happening in our schools, and I've got grandchildren that are in school. I want the best for them. We know that this is a mask. This is not a Republican. This is not a Democrat. This is not red or blue. This is simply a safety precaution. Doctors and nurses wear these in the hospital long before there was a COVID virus. I personally feel they are required in school for the safety of our children, for the safety of our teachers, for the safety of our paraprofessionals, our school lunch staff, our janitorial staff, our administration staff, our superintendent, and the Board of Education. We all need this protection. And by the way, mandates have been around for quite some time. I know as a school administrator, I had to check to be sure before anybody could be admitted into my school, my kindergarten, that they had their shot record complete. Nobody made a big deal about that, and I would dare say that most people in here tonight have all been vaccinated for polio or for tuberculosis. This has just gotten to be totally out of hand. This is for the safety of our community, for our children, for our population. By the way, seat belts are mandated. Did you know that? Do you complain about that? I wear my seat belt every day. So, at any rate, I just wanted to let you know that I am concerned, and I appreciate what you decide.
All right, those are the only people who came out of the 12 that were signed up. Mr. Hury, since you specifically mentioned that you had five minutes prepared, could you come up and finish yours, or did you condense it?
I'm good at this point.
Okay. Is there anybody else that we cut short that would like to finish a few remarks? And I mean, like, a minute or two, another two minutes? Okay, two minutes.
All right, I know that, like I said, we're on opposite sides of the aisle on some of this stuff. I mean, me and the ladies here, too, so we may have different opinions, but that's what America's about, difference of opinion and freedom to choose how you think or how you believe. The difference with the polio vaccine is that it had studies. These things that you're having to put in your body have not even been around for a year hardly. There is no study on the long-term effects of what it's gonna do to your children. They're talking about now, young boys, 12-years-old, having heart problems at a rate of 25 to what the older generation is, having heart issues at 12 and 15-years-old because of these vaccines. These vaccines have killed more, this, I mean, since, since they started these vaccines, it's killed more than all other vaccines combined in the last 15 years. That's the difference. Look it up. It's on the CDC head, the CDC website. I mean, that's a legitimate place. You said, "Do your research." I agree with you. But the thing is, you don't treat kids like lab rats. These are our babies. I mean, we are responsible for them 100%. You guys, you get the opportunity to decide, you know, about how they're trained with as far as math, science, reading, things like that. But on issues of our children's health, when it comes down to something that has not been studied, that's overstepping the boundaries. And it's not to be mean to anybody, but it's to save my kids. Here's the thing, if they feel like the mask works and they're wearing a mask, they should not have to worry about my child. If they feel like the vaccine works, they should not have to worry about my child. If the vaccine does work, why does a kid with the vaccine spread it at the same rate as somebody who is unvaccinated? And why, when they get, when they get it and they're in school, the one that's not vaccinated has to go home, but the one that is vaccinated gets to stay even though they spread it at the same rate to the other children? It don't make sense, y'all. And we're parents, and ain't nothing more sacred than your kids. So, we're going to mess with kids? It's gonna get ugly. Don't do it, please.
Was there anyone else that had anything to add to theirs? Yes, ma'am. Mrs. Williams. Two minutes, please, just to be sure.
I just wanted to add that even though we're here, all of us voicing our opinions, our beliefs, it doesn't matter. It doesn't matter what I believe, or what you believe, or what anybody else believes. What matters is, it's against the law for y'all to mandate a mask. And it's also against the law for y'all to segregate these kids and punish them for something they have no control over. They shouldn't be segregated. Look, I was a child of the 60s. I know what that's like. It was awful. I was there when the first black people came to Westminster School, and I made the best friends with Pam Burton, the first black girl that came to our school. Jarvis Berry, the first black boy that came to our school, loved him, was one heck of a football player. They were all good people. We got along fine. Our parents went crazy. It was stupid. It was totally stupid. Now, here I am with a four-year-old great-grandchild that's scared to death. He's afraid he's gonna give somebody something or get something. He don't know what to do. But they ain't worried about lice. They ain't worried about scabies. They ain't worried about HIV. They ain't worried about scarletina and everything else that they come home with. They're not worried about, my granddaughter was in second grade, felt, was pushed off the monkey bars at Orchard Park, broke both arms. Do you know who got her up? Wasn't a teacher, the kids. She was in shock when I got there. You think we got a phone call from the school? Not yet. That was in 1997. No, 2002. I got too many grandkids. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
I signed up, or I called, I called to sign up to speak, and I was on the, you know, I was on the waiting list, and so I deferred to the next week, but as long as you had time.
Right, if you'd like to come, if you'd like to come speak, that would be good. Just, when you come to the mic, please identify yourself.
My name is Ron Solenzic, and I appreciate the Board taking this matter very seriously, because it is a very serious matter, and it's gonna require serious and vir-. because it is a very serious matter, and it's going to require serious and very thoughtful and thorough evaluation to determine the best course to combat this pandemic that we're in right now. And I think the science is pretty clear and overwhelming that there's two ways to achieve success over this virus. Probably a combination of vaccination and wearing of masks in public spaces, particularly indoor spaces, which would certainly apply to all the schools in the district. So like I said, I think it's very... The science is overwhelming that the masks do prevent the spread of the virus absent any other vaccination or in combination with the vaccination. So you've heard very... You know, you've heard a lot of opinions, but I think the science is very clear that the masks are a tremendous asset to be used to combat this disease. And I trust the board will make the correct decision for the good of the community and also for the health of the students in the school district. Thank you.
Yes, sir. All right, if you could come up to the podium.
I'm Landon Lyle. I'm a freshman at Seneca High School. Actually Brett's friend, by the way. Good kid. Anyways, I'd like to give a few quick remarks, not trying to give like a political statement or anything. I personally don't want to wear a mask, but that's besides the point. I think that it's the confusion around it, and that's more detrimental to our emotional health than putting on a mask or whatever. Is, we don't know what's going on. Nobody tells us anything. And we are the ones being affected. We're the ones being talked about. And we don't know anything that's going on. And I think that's the worst part about this. Also, the science is overwhelming that many kids and teens don't die of COVID. It's like what, a 99.97% survival rate or higher? I'm not really sure. But I'd just like to say, you should really confer more with the people that are involved rather than people that aren't even related to the matter at all. Thank you.
All right, we certainly appreciate all you that have come tonight and that have spoken. Thank you. And at this time, public comment is closed, and we will continue with our meeting. And the first thing is our superintendent's report by Dr. Thorsland.
Thank you. First, I just kind of wanted to do a commercial for something the school district's going to be doing in a couple of weeks. But there are some flyers in the back. If anybody in the audience would like to grab one, we've got one at each of your places. But this is our second Hike for Hope. We have a Student Behavioral Health Committee. September is Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. And this is an event just to kind of shine a spotlight on suicide prevention and mental health awareness, the importance of that. And we did this two years ago, and it was very successful. Well, I thank Ms. McCormick's company, Blue Ridge Electric. They allow us to host it on their site, right there on 123 between Seneca and Westminster. And they've got a beautiful facility to host this. So we're going to do it. We didn't get to do it last year, but we're doing it again this year, and this year it's even bigger and better. It's... There are more resources that are going to be present. I think Prisma Health is going to have psychiatrists there. We're going to have counselors there. Many different local nonprofits that focus on suicide prevention and/or mental health issues. You can see one of the sayings they use is, "It's okay to not be okay." And just try to let people know that if you are struggling with mental health, it's okay to talk about it. It's okay to get help. We've got some faculty members, staff members, and former faculty staff members who have had suicide affect their families. And they have some organizations they've created that assist us with this. So just a great event and would encourage anyone to try to get friends, family, just to kind of come see what it's about. Because we want anyone in our community, not just students, but students especially, anyone in our community who is struggling with anything to do with mental health or suicidal thoughts, that type of thing, we want them to get help. Because that's not... We don't want that to be the end for anyone. We want people to know that they're people that care and want to help them. So that's what this is about, and I just wanted to make you aware of that and also make the public aware of that. The second thing I wanted to talk about tonight was just kind of where we are with COVID. And Ms. Dodd's going to give a more specific report in just a minute on school district of O'Conne County cases. But I wanted to share with you the DEHEC reports that I just updated this afternoon with this chart that's on your screen right now. It's on the TVs. But South Carolina, DEHEC does keep a seven-day rolling average for the state, and that's the number of positive cases received in a day. They take a seven-day average just to kind of normalize it, to keep you from having spikes one day and the next. So that seven-day average is probably the best statistic of how prevalent COVID is at the current time. And you can see that chart's up on the screen now. Back in January 12th, the average for South Carolina was 5,730. That was the highest point since COVID's been around in the last 16, 18 months. September 4th of this year, the state of South Carolina approached that number again with 5,473. That was the average. But thankfully, if you look at the last seven days on that graph, we are seeing a downward trend, which is wonderful. So as of September 11th, Saturday, which is the last number that's on this chart from DEHEC, we were at 4,405. So over 1,000 case-per-day drop in the seven-day average over the last week to 10 days, which is great. We certainly hope that will continue. The second chart here is more local. DEHEC also divides this by county, so you can click on any county, the 46 counties in our state, and get that same data for each county. So the O'Conne numbers, January 12th was 93.7 cases per day was the seven-day average. And that was the high up until just recently. But in O'Conne County, we actually got to 115.9, so right at 116 cases per day just about 10 days ago. That was August 3rd. Well, two weeks ago. That was August 30th. But as of today, that number's down to 87.7. Now, we did have a little uptick over the last couple of days that were reported, but there's still certainly a downward trend that we hope will continue. So hopefully, you know, next two or three weeks, we continue to see downward trend in the cases, and maybe we'll be able to get back to what we had hoped would be a normal school year. One thing I'd say, Ms. Bay, can you scroll back up to the South Carolina? One thing you can look at and just see patterns. Typically, it seems like as cases climb, they fall with the same trajectory. So if you look at that, you know, initially, back in June of '20, it was kind of a slow rise. It peaked, and then it was a slow fall. Then last winter, it was more of a steep climb, but it was a very steep fall as well. So if that holds true, we had a steep climb over the last month. Let's keep praying that we see a steep fall and that this concern is minimized. So anyway, just hopefully some good news that we can continue to see this. I still would, I guess, kind of stand behind what I said a couple of weeks ago at the board meeting. I recognize fully in listening to people speak that there are people who are fervent on both sides of this issue. I'm probably somewhere in the middle. Just to be perfectly honest, I don't think a mask, I said this, I don't think a mask is a silver bullet that's going to fix everything. However, if wearing a mask allowed us to quarantine fewer students, I think that's positive. Because at the end of the day, I want students in school. I feel bad that people's education has been interrupted for the past couple of years. I don't think it's anybody's fault. It's just something that happens. And I would still maintain that in O'Conne County, we've kept education as close to normal as any school district across this country. We were in school all of last year. Kids had a face-to-face option. We've not mandated masks this year, and that's not on the table right now because it is. As some people have referenced, our legislature has made that not possible right now for schools. We recognize that, and we're not one of those districts... There are districts in South Carolina that are pushing that. I talked to a couple of superintendents last week in districts that where they're pushing a mask mandate in spite of what the state decided. However, I also need to be, you know, open and honest. We do have a bus mandate for students to wear masks on the buses. And just to be clear on that, I do believe if we're going to follow the law with one respect, we need to follow it with the others too. And South Carolina, I believe, is the last state in the United States that has a state-run bus system. So if you go to Georgia and look at the buses, the yellow school buses, they'll say Raven County Schools or Hart County Schools. In South Carolina, it says South Carolina Public Schools. We have a state-run school bus system, so our yellow buses are owned by the State Department of Education. And they've issued a mask mandate for their buses. So I feel like we have to follow that because that's the rule of law in South Carolina. And I want to continue to do that. I don't feel like we have an option of putting a mask mandate in our buildings. And I do think we're obligated to enforce that on the bus because of the way the government set up. So that's what we'll continue to do. But again, we'll also continue to pray that these cases keep dropping over the coming weeks and that this becomes less and less of an issue moving forward. So that's about all I have.
Thank you. Mrs. Moore, you have several items now for us, I believe.
Turn on the mic so you all can hear me. We have the August financial report here.
Sorry? We have one monitor not working.
Oh, sorry.
Technology does not like me.
Sorry. So you have the report. There's not much out of the ordinary in this report. This is the first month that we pay teachers. We didn't have any teacher pay in July, but we do in August. So that makes the expenses quite a bit more than they were in July. But otherwise, it's pretty normal. Anybody have any questions?
The only question I had, and it's really not financial so much, is for Mrs. Simmons. I was looking at... Is it Heinemann? Is that how it's pronounced? I was looking at all the things that we've obviously purchased from there on the literacy side. Are most of those things delivered? Are they like hands-owned or are they online resources or?
The Heinemann, they're the Fonnison-Pennell Classroom Kits that we are working on restructuring our core curriculum for English Language Arts at the elementary level, which is a big undertaking for us, but we're very excited about it. And so Ms. Harrison and my department, along with all the reading coaches, are rolling that out kind of like in a timeline-type fashion for our schools. So it's giving our teachers the instructional materials and curriculum used to carry out balanced literacy in their classrooms.
But it is by and large tangible books.
Well, that's the way it looked. I just, I was curious. Okay.
And that's a perfect segue into the next topic.
Yes.
Those classroom books we purchased with our S.R. III money, you had in your packet a summary of the plan that we've submitted to the state. It has not been approved yet, but they have it. And I just, if you'll let me have just a few minutes, I'll just kind of go over what is in each category. We were required to set aside 20% for learning loss. That would have been $4.2 million, and you can see we have budgeted about $6 million for that. Those books that we talked about are in there. Several other instructional technology programs are also in there, multi-year contracts. We have hired three coaches that are going to help in the elementary levels, right, Lisa?
Yes.
Those are three-year contracts also, so those are coaches that would help the teachers with their teaching, if that's how I understand it.
Nice, good question there.
Yes, sir.
On the books and on the material that S.R. allows us to use, is there a mandate of any specific type of curriculum that we're supposed to look at?
No, sir.
Thank you.
But the decisions, I'll say, Mr. Herring, on why we chose what we chose is based on performance data, you know, that we have been analyzing within the elementary level, meaning to meet more of our kind of like core instructional needs. And also, another area was phonemic awareness and phonics is something that we see as a trend. Once we get to second grade, we're not seeing, you know, the growth that we want to. So we've also purchased Hegarty, which is a phonics and phonemic awareness program as a mandated, like core instruction for our lower-grade levels. And it can also be used in our upper-grade levels for intervention for students as well.
Thank you.
We also included interventionists in that learning loss category. We have plans for 12 of those for the next two years. The next category is the $300,000 for activities, any activities authorized under the ESEA. And we found a little detail in some of the information that we got that would allow us to purchase musicians' instruments. So we have budgeted $300,000 to buy the larger instruments for band and for strings or orchestra. So our teachers are really excited about that. And we're going to share that in each of the attendance areas. So each area is going to get around $100,000. Let's see. Activities to address unique needs of specific students. We are hiring an additional ESOL teacher for three years. That's her salary and fringe. Educational technology, we have $5 million budgeted there. We will use that to refresh our teacher devices and then to, over the next three years, to replenish our Chromebooks for students. $50,000 for mental health services and supports. We already had a subscription for FastBridge that we were using for academic testing, screening. But there's also a component of that that addresses mental health, children at risk of mental health issues, and that we have renewed that subscription also for another year. One, we also had another category addressing learning loss among students in addition to what we had already budgeted, and that's $370,000. And I'm going to let Lisa explain that. It's the CASE benchmark.
Yes. So another area that we're wanting to meet is common assessments among our departments and grade levels. So with CASE and Mastery Connect, we're able to have an item bank of standards-based questions at different depths of knowledge levels. So teachers are able to pull from the item bank, create a test in any subject area, K-12, to work together on creating common assessments and making sure they're varying the depths of knowledge questions on their assessments. That also, in hope, will turn for the teaching, making sure we're asking those higher-level questions, doing maybe more formative assessments with those types of questions. So we're hoping it'll have a direct reflection on the... So we're hoping it'll have a direct reflection on the instruction going on in the classrooms. And then this year, we are starting with benchmarks for our EOC courses at the high school level, where all, you know, your Algebra II students will be taking the same benchmark. We're going to start spring semester this year, but we're hoping to do it at different increments in the year to help us get a better idea of what standards our students are really mastering prior to the EOC and what do we still need to work and support. So we do have a plan to carry this into middle and elementary for the benchmark tests, but all grade levels will have access to the item bank of standards-based questions to create common assessments with. So we're hoping our first round of professional development for this will be on our October 18th District in Service Day.
Listen, these, the questions you talk about are standardized questions and not teacher-made questions?
Yes, sir.
That's right. But what, if I could just jump in and add, what we're really looking for in the high school, at the high school level this year with implementation is, first of all, we want to make sure all of our teachers are very familiar with state standards so they know what they're supposed to be teaching, all the standards. And then there's a consistent level of, of teaching in all of our schools. So I've, I've got kids in college right now. They go to a site called RateMyProfessor.com, and it tells, it'll tell you, like, based on past performance, what, what students thought of the professor and how hard the professor was. And it's terrible that you can look at the same course, the exact same course, and the professor determines the difficulty because one's really, really hard and a tough grader and maybe a terrible lecturer, and another one's easier, and we don't want that to occur in Oconee County schools. If you take Chemistry I at Seneca High School, no matter who teaches it, it should be the same rigor, and a kid should learn the same things. And what they should learn is South Carolina standards. But even more than that, a student who takes Chemistry I at Wahala or West Oak should be getting the same course that they get in Chemistry I at Seneca. So this is really going to help us bring the correct standards to all of our classrooms and a consistency that maybe we've not had. I'm not saying it's been terrible, but we've not really had a way to measure it and make sure that it's equitable in different places. And it, it needs to be because what we need to be teaching is what the state standards say we should be teaching. It is not making teaching, it is not taking away a teacher's ability to be creative. We're not telling them how to teach. We are telling them what to teach, but we're not. The state of South Carolina does. We just need to make sure that that's happening. So we still want teachers to put their spin on it, their unique abilities, and, and use those in their classrooms. But we don't have the luxury to say, well, I like the Civil War if I'm a U.S. history teacher, so I'm going to spend 18 weeks on the Civil War, but I'm not going to teach much on the American Revolution. We've got to teach what the standards tell us to teach, and this will help us ensure that we do that.
How often is this monitored?
Well, we're getting into it now, so it will be, the benchmarks will start off at quarter courses, quarter tests, nine-weeks tests essentially. But what we want to do with common assessments, common assessments are getting the teachers, all the teachers who teach U.S. history in a building, get them together, and they work together to come up with their chapter tests so that, and my experience is when you get people together and you get people working as a team rather than just individuals here and there, you're going to have a better product. Teachers are going to grow from working with each other, and it's just going to be a better, a better experience all around. So I, I'm excited about this, and I think it's going to make us more effective in the classroom.
And one other feature is they can take our standards-based timelines that has our pacing of when we teach our certain standards and input them into the platform too. So questions and things that teachers are pulling from align to what they have taught or should have taught, so it brings some accountability there. I mean, our overall hope for the things that we've purchased instructionally for SR3 is just to be able to give the teachers what they need to do the good job that they do every day and, and hoping that that, all of these things will help them be able to be efficient and not, you know, be too overwhelming. We're trying to be really intentional with that, you know, rolling out too much at one time, but just to give them what they need to, to do a really nice job teaching in their classrooms.
So the use of the SR funds has given you a pretty wide scope of field to choose from, and they haven't narrowed you into too much of a channel, is that right?
I don't think so. I actually feel like these types of things that we're doing right now, we wouldn't have been able to do without this level of funding, so it's very exciting.
Thank you.
It also allows us to use money to improve indoor air quality, and we have several projects that we're going to work on with that. Mr. Handy's going to talk about those.
Right. You know, on this plan, we have $9 million listed there. I keep telling him it's supposed to be 10, but she Gloria only gave me nine. But we have two proj, two main projects with that. Fair Oak Elementary and James M. Brown will be redoing their whole HVAC systems. Those amount to about $3.5 million apiece to get them up to speed and where they need to be. Those buildings were occupied beginning in '95. We just, well, we started, completed it. We're in phase two of it, but we've spent, we have a project at Seneca Middle, excuse me, Seneca High from the funds before this. Hopefully Landon's feeling a whole lot more comfortable in his classroom than the folks were last year, but we completely redid the whole HVAC system there. It's a four-pipe system. We had to put new chillers and everything in and replace all that. They did the majority of that during the summer. We have a few areas they're going to work on in the fall. We've got some things that they need to do down by the gym, the music areas and those, but for the most part, the vast majority of the work in the classrooms and things that has been done. And, and it's improved not only the, the feel in there, but the air quality. So we're very thankful as an operation and maintenance side to be able to use some of this funding. So out of this, $7 million for those two schools. The other two million, we have smaller projects which we'll kind of work through and prioritize. Some of that will depend on where and what direction the board thinks we might go on the next building plans because we don't want to invest, you know, $3 billion into a building that we might be replacing in, in a few years when, and that kind of thing after Seneca Middle gets, gets done. So there are a few things that we've got. We've got a long list, and we are, as Ms. Simmons said, we feel the same way. We would have had to come up with a way to pay for Seneca High School because it had to be fixed. I mean, the tank, the chiller rusted out completely. We were limping through on one chiller for the last part of the year. I think it's 30 years old, 31 years old, original to the building. So thankfully, this came along and was something we could use. And again, we talk about trying to do things with non-reoccurring expenses. Well, this is taking some things out off the table that we would have had to do maybe from capital improvements and that, which helps keep Seneca Middle online with the timeline we have now.
And then the last item on the list is the $150,000, other activities to maintain operations and continuity of services, and that is to help us pay for subs so that our employees don't have to use their personal leave or annual leave if they have COVID or if they have to care for someone in their home that has COVID. So I'm glad to be able to do that. Any questions?
When do we expect to hear back from, do we know?
We don't know.
Okay.
I don't want to anticipate any problem. We, we tried to make sure, because that's a lot of money. $21 million is a lot of money, but if we weren't careful, we could spend that over three years, and then three years from now, our principals would say, okay, how are we paying for it now? So we tried to plan to purchase things, put positions in for a finite number of years so that it doesn't create a problem for us three years from now. That was our, our goal. We're meeting needs, but we're trying to do it in a way that, that doesn't leave us in a tough place when this funding is gone three years from now.
One other thing I just wanted to say too is on the instructional side, when we were completing the paperwork for SR3, a lot of the instructional purchases have to be related back to our academic recovery plan too. That's already been approved by the state. So a lot of what we have purchased goes right along with those recovery goals for academics as well. So I think that will be a seamless approval process for those two.
Okay.
All right. And then I have some information about the South Carolina School Board Association voting delegates.
So you have a meeting on December 4th, and it is the South Carolina School Boards Association's annual business meeting, Saturday, December 4th in Charleston. And the way the School Boards Association is organized, Oconee County has allocated four votes. So in the past, those votes have been determined by which board members attend the meeting in Charleston. So this doesn't have to be decided tonight. I believe we vote on it next week. So if you guys want to talk and determine who's going to be going to Charleston for that conference, and then we can allocate the four votes accordingly. I believe if, if there aren't four of you going, I think one person can carry a proxy and vote multiple times, but our county gets four votes, and you just get to figure out how to disperse those, and Ms. Bay will get that information back too.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Is there going to be a limit to the number of people from each district that can go as there was the last conference?
Ms. Bay, did you, are you aware if there's a limit on the number of attendees at this conference?
It just says that there's four votes. I don't know if there's a limit on the number.
So it's not, it, it doesn't appear to be limited because last year, they were very clear about that. This year, they haven't been, so I'm assuming that means that all five of you could attend if you so choose.
And I can check tomorrow and have an answer for next week.
Yeah.
Well, if everybody would just kind of look at their calendar and determine if they're going to be attending that, that would be great, and we can vote on it next week. And now, Mrs. Dodd, our COVID rep, our public reporting system that you have.
You know, the last time we were together, we were somewhat overwhelmed with all the data, and we were honest to say that we were slightly behind, but since then, we've worked really hard. Sherry McLaughlin, our nursing supervisor, Crystal Bab, another one of our nurses, we worked well together to come up with a good system. And so, I don't know, maybe for about a week now, we've gotten it under control. We have a really good system going forward. So our data is actually up to date as of today. Of course, it's possible that we, you know, Paret might not let us know for a few days, but from what we have, we're up to date as of today. August totaled out to 507 cases. That is still possible to change. I did get one case today that was still an August case. We were in school for 15 days during August, and that meant we had 33.8 cases per each school day in August. That's a lot. September, so far, we've had 185 cases. We've had eight school days, including today, which brings our total to 23.1 cases per school day. So we're beginning to see that drop that Dr. Thorzlin talked about, even within our classrooms.
The other thing we want to talk about is, you'll notice that currently we have no closures while we had 50 closures in August. When we started school, we took a very conservative approach to closures, meaning that we closed very quickly, a classroom, a bus, a sports team. What we found is we were sending huge numbers of students home, so we weren't keeping our kids in class. After sitting down and talking as a group and talking with our nursing folks, really trying to find a way to get that under control so that more kids were in school. So we've backed up a little bit and taken a, a careful approach that we're still making sure that we're providing protection for our students, but being a little slower to close those classrooms. So the last of our classrooms or buses came back yesterday, so we currently don't have anyone out. What we're seeing would not indicate that that approach is causing an increase in cases. So we'll hold steady with that. We'll definitely keep monitoring. If we see an uptick and we feel like we have to reevaluate that, we will. So I just, I know we all say it, I want to brag on our nurses and just thank them. They are working really hard. All of our employees are working hard to make sure our kids are getting what they need and staying in school.
Before Ms. Dodd finishes, I, I want to brag on her. Many of you don't know that Ms. Dodd's an engineer. She was trained as an engineer, so this math science fits right in with, with what she was trained to do in college. And she developed this website from scratch. She, it's an Excel spreadsheet, and she's got pulling data from multiple places to populate this, so it's fairly automated at this point, but she and her husband did this, I think, on the weekend and, and got it working. It, it's really a model, in my mind, for being open and honest with the public to say, here's what, where our cases are, and it's pretty specific, so it's a lot of good information. So I do want to brag on her because she's been a conduit between our nurses. She works with, with Sherry and Crystal daily and gets information from them, and then she's doing a great job of getting it out to the public, which is what a public information officer is supposed to do, but she's, she's doing it well. So appreciate all her effort here. Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. And it's so accessible. It's right there on the homepage of the district website, so it's easy to go to and look at every day if you wonder what's going on in our schools. So I appreciate that. Thank you so very much.
That was all.
All right, now Dr. Thorzlin, discussion and donation of district supplies.
Yes, and I, we would love for you to take action on this. Just for the public's knowledge, whenever we get rid of equipment in the school district or supplies, things that have been purchased with public money, there's a very prescribed way that we have to get rid of those, typically through some type of auction where people can come in and say, I'll give you that much for that. But occasionally, we have a reason to want to donate supplies rather than put it in an auction. And we recently moved from the Career Center in Bounty Land to the new one on Highway 11. And as part of that move, the culinary program got some new supplies for the, their students, plates, napkins, forks, spoons, that kind of thing. So there's a lot of those materials left at the old Bounty Land campus. Probably not worth a lot of money. It's not like fine china or anything like that, but still very functional. So we would like to, and we've already checked with our Daily Bread, but we would like to donate all those supplies to our Daily Bread, which is the, the food, provide meals to homeless and, and those who are down and out in Oconee County. They could use that equipment. We think it would be a nice gesture for us to donate that older, those older kitchen supplies that we no longer need and give them to our Daily Bread. So if y'all would let us do that, we'd love to facilitate getting that stuff to them so they could use it to help people out.
Do you need a motion?
I'm going to, we donate anything that they can use, that you feel they need.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion on it at all? It's a great thing to do. All in favor? Okay. That is done. All right, at this time, that ends our regular work session meeting tonight. We do have a time of executive session, and if there are no objections, we will go into executive session. Appreciate each of you being here tonight and the comments you made. Thank you.